...this meeting of the Quincy City Council and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counsel Kane, present. Counsel Crowell, present. Counsel DeLonge, present. Counsel LaFarge, present. Counsel Liang, present. Counsel Kamaluch, present. Counsel Hughes, present. Seven members, we have a floor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. If you could all join me in a moment, if you'd all stand. And join me in a moment for a prayer for our servicemen and servants over here and abroad, and all those meeting special guidance this evening. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read the open meeting log.
Thank you, Madam President. This is Madam General Counsel, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-eight. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, but may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore obliged to accept recordings or transmissions that being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable or missive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. All right. At this time, I would like to recess this portion of the meeting and go back into the SPGA.
So moved.
So, all right. There's been a motion to do so. Is there a second? Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will recess this portion of the regular meeting and reconvene. So I think I need to bang the gal again. All right? I need to bang the gal again here.
Back.
There we are. All right. We're back in the SPGA. Mr. Simmons, if you would take the voting. And I know Counsel Kamaluch had a question that he was getting to.
Thank you. As it relates to the notice of appeal, which is what you're asking us to do tonight, and I'm not, I'll tell you what I'm not going to do, Jim. I'm not going to move that we approve the permit because I don't think we're in a position to do that, even though I think that's one of our options. I'm not going to do that. I wouldn't support doing that if someone else did it, so.
I regard that as entirely appropriate.
Yeah, so I'm narrowing.
Sure, I'm joined by the board of council in this ward to see my proposals look fit.
Well, why that's a consideration is because last week when I asked you, is there a timeframe for us to approve the permit with mitigation? You indicated that there wasn't a specific timeframe, but logic, knowing the judge is remand and the judge in the case, would dictate that it's not something we can, I don't know, I forget what the words you used were, but essentially delay, purposefully delay, right? So that's a concern of mine, is I don't want to purposefully delay this to the point where, for any reason, right? And we're responsible, I mean, we're a separate body, but we're responsible for what the city does as a whole. It's not as if that remand order was, and the judge's memo was specific to our conduct. And I say that as a body. It brought into, it discussed city employees' conduct, the mayor's conduct, and the roles that people had. So it's not just about us, it's the city as a whole, right? The city government as a whole. So while we may not have some purpose to unnecessarily delay passage, if the city's deemed to be dragging their feet because we can't come to some mitigation agreement, as you said, that could be deemed by the judge as unreasonably delaying. And I'm not saying that's what's happening here. I'm saying that's why I'm raising a concern, that's why I'm asking, when will we know about the mitigation, if there's a timeframe? So that's, that's why I'm asking. But I agree with you that it would be perhaps not prudent at this time to vote passage of the permit. That being said, we technically don't have to do anything at this point. The city is negotiating or working in good faith at this time towards an agreement for mitigation with the applicant. We don't necessarily have to file a notice of appeal. That's a legal decision, and that's an opinion that you're giving us, that we should file a notice of appeal. It's not as if approve the permit tonight or file the notice of appeal. We could do nothing tonight. We could simply have a conversation about the status of things and do nothing, correct?
Yes, although I strongly recommend against that.
Right. No, I understand your legal opinion that we should.
Because your notice of appeal is on a deadline. It is on a timeframe.
I understand that. Thirty-day deadline, thirty-day time.
Correct.
And is that thirty days from the date of the remand order or thirty days from the motion for damages?
It's the entry of final judgment. So the motion for damages will have to be heard, and frankly, one of the things that I considered, but it's just we've got to keep this moving, is that technically until the motion for damages is heard, there is, there's no final judgment, so the thirty days doesn't start. But I don't want to keep coming back to the body about this. When the decision came in, I wanted to, and well, I shouldn't say I wanted to, the mayor instructed me to talk publicly about the decision with the body and so that the public would be aware. That's when the notice of appeal issue was raised. I indicated at that time that the motion was going to be forthcoming. I got it two or three days later, and I talked to Mr. Murray about it. But it does stay the thirty-day period, but I still think we should either yes or no. It'll sit there, and I won't be filing the motion until the final judgment enters anyway. And we have a conference with the judge this week, phone conference. He may tell us that he's going to wait on the entry of final judgment until we further discuss the mitigation, so.
That's very obvious.
So there are a lot of things in play here, but I just think the body needs to be informed that it's got the option, and if you want to be conservative and protect your interests, then, you know, the notice appeals will go.
I appreciate that, because that's the first time I'm hearing that. I didn't realize that the damages piece told the statute for filing notice of appeal.
Yes, expenses, not damages. Because there has been some talk that there were damages here. There are no damages. There's no damage toward the C Street zoning appeal, and it was expenses.
Sorry, I'll use the term.
No, just so everyone's clear.
Well, being a lawyer, I should be using terms of art, so I.
Correct.
I'll try to do it.
One of the other things you shouldn't do.
Yes, right. You'll have to give me the list after the meeting. So my concern about filing a notice of appeal at this point is we don't have a legal basis for an appeal has been expressed to us. So when we exchanged email, I, two weeks ago, I'd asked that you give us something in writing between the meetings so that we could consider it relative to what the good faith basis for filing a notice of appeal is. In your email to me on Friday, you'd indicated it's probably not appropriate to be drafting a memo of that nature and be distributing it outside of a public meeting or executive session, what have you. And I appreciate that and respect that. But today, we still don't have, and I'm giving you an opportunity to provide that if there is an explanation to be given relative to the good faith basis for why we should file a notice of appeal. Because from my perspective, simply saying to preserve our rights, especially now that we know there's, there isn't a deadline looming, we could do this in two weeks, we could do this at another meeting to file a notice of appeal if things go off the tracks, I'm concerned that we're taking a legal step that isn't in the best interest of the city or perhaps isn't well thought out in terms of how it ends. And I know there's matters on the agenda tonight relative to outside counsel, and the city lost a lawsuit recently, unrelated lawsuit recently, there's been some judgments against the city, cases that predated you and were handled prior to your coming on vote as solicitors, not to get you, Jim. But I think nothing frustrates taxpayers more than seeing tax dollars pay for judgments against the city in cases that other folks may think should have been settled or perhaps shouldn't have been appealed. Now, I know you can take issue with some of those, some of those thoughts, but we hear, I mean, we as ward councils, we hear, oh, why is the city doing this? Why is the city doing that? Why is, why are we losing this case, that case? So my concern is that by filing a notice of appeal without a good faith basis, we're essentially ratcheting up this, this back and forth, this legal back and forth on C-Mark. And I don't, without a good faith basis, I don't know that that's a good idea. And now that they've moved for expenses, which, when someone says, well, sue you for damages, I'm a lawyer, I get that. I'm not afraid of being sued for things. I don't think that that's a reason not to do things if you think you have a good faith basis for your actions. But without having some sort of presentation as to why we should be filing a notice of appeal, I can't support the issuance of a notice of appeal simply for the justification of preserving our legal rights.
Well, I'm happy to make that presentation.
By all means.
I've talked with a couple of other counselors, Counsel Kane, and Counsel Liang came and met with me on it because they were concerned. I've talked with Counsel Hughes since he was elected by us. I alluded to this at the last meeting. First of all, you made reference tonight about the fact that the judge spends a lot of time talking about the mayor when he did. The mayor sent out something during campaign, on his campaign literature. That was used in this decision by the judge to draw an inference that the permit granting authority, a separate body in government, as you know, there's the executive, the legislative, and judicial grants. This legislative branch totally autonomous from the mayor. The mayor had every right, he could have come forward at one of the hearings and spoken about what he thought about the project. A mayor can speak on projects. This mayor, Mayor Koch, has worked, as many of you know, some of the newer councils don't know, projects that come into wards that are reported for the city. He's worked with the applicants and the ward counselors to get the project through the permitting process. This project, upon the initial review and the reaction of at least one ward counselor, Counsel McNamee of Ward Six, who raised legitimate concerns about traffic and other issues, the mayor had those same concerns, and you referenced that as well. There are some existing traffic problems there. The mayor talked about that, but in the context of this decision, the mayor's not part of the permit granting authority. It's the permit granting authority, what you say, what you do, and what influences that may have affected the outcome, that is supposed to be measured by the judge. So that's one area where I think there was a mistake made. That would be a mistake a lot. There was a mistake in the factual findings, I believe, because the traffic engineer made references during what's called a time delay study to the fact that his team who was out doing there, they started down at Han Street and drove to Allen, and they tracked how long it took them to go back and forth along Hancock in order to determine what type of traffic issues there were and do a time delay study. How long would a driver be delayed at the various points along the way? Well, this particular study included a time delay, a group that did the time delay study making comments such as stopped at the red light at Bass Street for thirty seconds. Well, there is no red light at Bass Street. They transpose street names so that they would say they stopped at Beach and then stopped at Allen and then stopped at Bass. So my argument in the case was that it was clear that whoever did the underlying time delay study, which was a critical component of the traffic engineer's conclusions, either falsified or made mistakes in the numbers. Now, I don't believe myself in good faith that it was falsification, but it could have been something as much as sitting in a Dunkin' Donuts locker saying, look, it's taken me seven or eight minutes the last three times, so I'm going to sit here for twenty minutes and have a coffee and falsify data. While that calls into question a lot of other things as well. So I believe there's issues with underlying data, and yet the traffic engineer for the applicant was totally credited, and our consulting engineer was criticized for the work they did when all they did was peer review. They were clearly hired solely to do peer review work. So there are a number of issues that I have with the decision that I didn't want to discuss too publicly because, as I explained to counselors Liang and Kane, I want to avoid getting into an entrenched battle on different matters here. I don't want to continue the argument, as it were, and essentially, that's what I would be doing if I pressed these issues. But I would hope that the members of this body would trust that I seen that you file a notice of appeal. There absolutely is a good faith basis for it. I've indicated that, and I'm not going to do otherwise at any time. And as you know, I have ethical obligations under oath, so I'm not, this isn't any sort of flight of fancy here, and it's not really driven by the mayor either. The mayor specifically said to me, it's the SPGA permit, it's this body's decision, and we're going to work with them. I'll do the litigation component, and his engineers and other people who would help him in mitigation will work on that component. That's where the administration is on it. But I absolutely think this good faith basis to appeal and want to put it in there because I'm concerned about things that are said in the decision and concerned that the judge engaged in what's called substituted judgments, that although the prior body that voted on the permit thought it wasn't appropriate, this judge is saying, look, I think it is, and then he gets to write the decision to backfill in that conclusion. So that's why I think we should file it, but I also, you know, in saying that, I feel very strongly, as it appears you do, that we don't want to engage in further litigation if we want to try to work this permit out. And if that's the will of the body, that's what's going to happen, and I believe it is. But that doesn't mean we can't take a step to protect ourselves in the event that there's some shifting sands and things change. And that's all I want.
And I appreciate that.
I want you to vote to authorize me, but I'm not even going to file it yet.
But we only get one vote on this, right? It's not like you're going to come back, we authorize you to file it, and you're going to come back and say, hey, I want you to vote on whether or not I file a brief, I want you to vote on whether or not I go to an oral argument. I mean, this is our, for this body, this is our only option. I mean, this is our only, this is our only vote on this.
No, I know what you're saying, but it's not quite like that because this isn't like voting on a ordinance or where someone from the losing side's going to have to move to reconsider. I'm the attorney representing the body. If you bring me back in two months and say, how are the negotiations going? Why isn't this done? We don't want you to file a notice of appeal. You could shift it. I mean, there's no cement setting up here on this decision.
So we could pull back and tell you to withdraw the appeal at some point?
Well.
Honor that, that this body's decision?
Yes, the body could do that. Because we'll be coming back in front of you on mitigation, one way or another.
So we could do that relative to the notice of appeal? We could do that?
Yes, absolutely.
But that's, I had the same conversation with the mayor. I don't even think this should be up to us, quite frankly. We're nominal defendants here. I don't think that the decision of whether or not to appeal should be up to us. This is the first time in my experience as a counselor in six years that the mayor has come to us for essentially a vote on how to engage legal strategy, which I believe is a function of the executive.
The mayor is not coming to you. The city solicitor is coming to you.
Okay.
The attorney is coming forward.
I apologize for that, then.
Yeah. This has not, as I told you, the mayor said he'll do the mitigation end, I'm doing the litigation end. I was burned once on this case already by the permit granting authority back during the first iteration, and I just determined at that time I'm not going to let it happen again. I'm going to make, because if I didn't come before you, I would have just been filing a notice of appeal because I believe it's in your best interest. And then you probably would have been one of the first people to drag me up here and kick the peaches out.
Absolutely would have asked the questions, absolutely.
So we're getting the kicking done first, and then hopefully I could file the notice of appeal, and we all move on.
And that's how, and that's how the good sausage is made, right?
Correct.
So, but there's an argument, you agree with me, there's an argument to be made that the mayor, with his executive powers, could make a decision whether or not to.
Yeah, but it's litigation. Under the charter, the city solicitor controls litigation, but I have to keep an eye on who the client is. I've done this with the ConCon before as well.
But you said the mayor told you to come back here and get our vote. That's the only reason why I said the mayor.
About the decision.
Right.
Talked about the decision when I did. Because you were, that was in reference to your question about why I raise this at this point if there's no final judgment. That's all.
So I'll end with this, because I want to give my call as someone's taking opportunity. But you and I, you may not remember, we spoke a day or two after the judgment came out. And I told you I had read it, and I had some concerns as well. And you encouraged me to be moderate on my criticism of that order. I mean, I do think that there is instances of substituted judgment that the judge makes there. I was on that body. I voted in it. I took, I heard the testimony, and there are things in that order, in that remand order, that simply do not jive with my recollection and my personal experience. So I can see some issues with the remand order and some issues with the decision in understanding the law and what the judge is and isn't allowed to do in a case like this. I have some strong concerns, but I don't know that they rise to the level of actually appealing. And I appreciate that your legal opinion to us is to file a notice of appeal to preserve our rights. I just, I have real concerns about appealing for the sake of an appeal that in the end could cost taxpayers money. And, you know, we, the city tends to pick fights, lose them, and then the taxpayers pay for them, and I don't want to see that here. I don't want to see something like that happen in this particular instance.
And my experience, I've been the solicitor since 2008, and one of the things I tell everyone is that we've been out picking fights. One of the reasons we have the good outcomes we do is we don't pick fights, truly.
Well, no, I don't know.
And most of the resolutions, I mean, the C-Mark case, as you recall, when it first came in here, was so inflammatory, it was amazing, and everyone was, you know, at first, Counsel McNamee was, you know, he was the target, then Mayor Koch was. Well, notwithstanding that, Mayor Koch continued to deal with a taxpayer who owns a lot of property in the city and is a prominent figure in his community and has a good relationship with them today. Before the judge's decision issued, Mayor Koch had continued to work with Mr. Fang and his representatives and developed a very positive relationship. That's made my job easy. I have a pretty easy job. I mean, legal outcomes aren't always. It's not like, like there are some people who think that, you know, I'm playing video games in the solicitor's office, sometimes I win, sometimes I lose. No, legal outcomes, there's a lot of things that go on, a lot of moving parts. None of these cases have been about the city picking fights. I think in good faith, the prior body determined the permit wasn't appropriate. The most recent case you were talking about, the ConCon denied a permit to somebody on a lot that floods the entire neighborhood, supported the decision, a jury thought otherwise. We had no one from Quincy on the jury. Might have helped if we did. So I understand your concerns about perceptions. I'm not looking to pick or perpetuate a fight, and I know that the mayor and most members of this body want to go in the other direction, as does Mr. Fang and his team. So that's the direction I want to go, still the lawyer's job to say, notwithstanding that, this is an appropriate legal step, and that's what I'm trying to do tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Kamaluch. Anyone else having not been heard? Anyone else? All right, Counsel Crowell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is him, sorry, the mic. It's not me, you can hear it. It's a mic to your left, if you just. Just kind of take a step back, you know, it was quite a back and forth, and, you know, to Counsel Kamaluch's point, you know, I sat, yeah, this is one of the first things I got involved in when I got elected to the SPGA relative to C-Mark. I'm assuming based on what, you know, your visual from end to end with the legal boxes filed, there's a pretty strong understanding as to what the ask will be in terms of mitigation somewhat, right? Can you give an idea what you're actually?
Somewhat, but one of the issues is, you know, you have the train tracks on one side, and then, I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but there's a full signalization for that in the efforts. It's like 200 feet down the road. So we're a little constrained as to what we can do, and those are the things that we're looking at about how we're going to deal with those constraints to come up with something meaningful. But beyond that, I would say that the universe of potential mitigation measures has been stale. It needs to be refined.
It sounds like the relationship amongst both parties is maybe you were in the middle.
I, yes, I've always had a terrific working relationship with Mr. Murray, the lawyer for the other side. That's never been an issue. The mayor has developed a very positive working relationship. I've not been personally privy to it, but I understand he's had meetings with Mr. Fang and Mr. Ryan, who's Mr. Fang's representative. Mr. Ryan was at each day of the trial, I have a fine relationship with him. So I do think that the bodies are able to talk more. Plus, unlike before, where neither side really knew who was going to prevail, now the man court has said, this is where we are. The permit should issue. You have to focus on mitigation. So things are a little more defined as well.
So it sounds like obviously, judge said, yes, this is, this is going forward. And both parties, I mean, you would say solicitor, the representative, probably motivated to find positive outcomes, so they can move forward.
Correct.
So we're probably talking within a reasonable timeframe? You know, that's a.
Yes, yeah.
You have that sort of perspective. I mean, it sounds like, you know, the operation of the intersection quite well, so I'm assuming you're going to get the yes soon.
Yeah, the traffic data was all vetted pretty thoroughly in the trial, and there's far more familiarity with that now than there was prior to the trial, I'd say. So I do think so.
So basically, this notice of appeal, just to sum up the money in fact, the notice of appeal allows you to build up and figure out a mitigation act that'll work for that particular area, and it's three of one of my bullpups.
Well, I'm telling you what I think as I stand here today and what I believe, but if this sand shift, or for whatever reason, things go in a different direction, I just want to keep options open. I don't expect that's going to happen based on.
This provides a buffer.
Correct. That's a good word for it.
Helps me some of that off. I didn't know you were a video game dude, that's really interesting.
I'm terrible at video.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, Counsel LaFarge.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to follow up. Please, Counsel Kamaluch, address this in the timeline for us to introduce a motion. Is that something that my understanding was that does not need to be done tonight? Is there a date certain that must be? If we were to proceed with, I get it, it's a placeholder, right? We're looking to protect our interests. Is there a date certain we must do that by?
That you must take the vote to authorize a notice of appeal. The date certain is thirty days from the date final judgment enters. Since we started the discussion, I thought we should just, and frankly, since I thought it was not that, you know, difficult a decision, that's the part that I've miscalculated. I think this is a pretty easy decision, but to the extent it's of greater concern to anyone, you have thirty days from the date that the final judgment enters. If final judgment enters June 30th, then we're going to have to have a special meeting of the body to do it. So my thought was just get the vote out of the way and let it be sitting there to just to have it, have it done and completed, and then you're, you're in a position where you're ready to move forward, and we're all ready. But if you want to wait, you can wait, but it may just require a special meeting.
And then upon that, with the remand order from the judge, is there a timeline that we must move it back to the judge where we stand with the applicant? And are there any benchmarks upcoming between now and now, I guess, could we?
I'm going to be engaged in a telephone conference with the judge on Thursday, and during that conference, he's going to ask that same question. Now, Mr. Murray and I have talked, as I indicated, Mr. Ryan, who's the representative of C-Mark, he's away. I know we'll be representing to the judge that will have, we'll probably start with one joint meeting and see what can be done, and that will be during this month, and then there may be follow-up meetings. So my guess would be that this judge will probably want us reporting at least on a thirty-day cycle, if not more frequently. So I'm expecting over the next, you know, the next couple of months that we'll work through this. I don't think there's any new data that has to be assembled.
And what about the traffic data provided?
That's what I'm saying. I think we have all that.
Is that something that means to redo those traffic studies if you're saying the information?
We have all that, so.
From our peer review?
Excuse me?
From our peer review?
We have the peer review work, and there were, this is one of the issues that I confused Counsel Kamaluch on. There was considerable work done, discussion of all this in the context of mitigation. We're simply going to revisit all that. We're simply going to revisit all that in light of the judge's decision. Some of the things that came out of the trial will be rejected as we may at that, we'll see. And then, we'll see what the engineers agree on. And I'll probably be consulting with, because it's in her ward primarily, and the impacts extend there. There are impacts down at Ward 6, I'm not sure how we'll handle that, I'll ask Councilor Hughes and Goddard on that point. But, um, once there seems to be a consensus, and I expect that to be in the, you know, within the 30 to 60-day timeframe, we come back in front of the body.
So, 30 to 60 days timeframe, so right now offline, mitigation is being worked out through the mayor's office, through your office and Mr. Fang. We should be anticipating seeing what that mitigation package is going to be. Hypothetically, we cannot, I think, we want to change the body from what we discussed, the discussion, really centered on traffic and how difficult that area is. What if, what the engineer presents as far as traffic mitigation is something then that is beyond Mr. Fang's expectations? So, he said, okay, City Council willing to issue the permit, this is the discussion about traffic mitigation, but it's exorbitant? Because that's what the need of the neighborhood is. I'm just, a little bit, sorry to be hypothetical, I'm just trying to, on a timeline, where we're going to go and...
If that event occurred, the judge is retaining jurisdiction and made clear that he just have us come back in front of him, lay it out and he'd order the mitigation measures. He wants the...
He could do that.
Permit granting authority to get as much done as possible, because we know, know the conditions, we know the city. But were we unable to successfully agree, or to reach what's reasonable, then the judge would, and he's made that clear.
Do you want to make that? Uh, I'll say?
Please, Judge.
Okay. Uh, Council, please, Council, Council.
Thank you. That was nice. So, I'm just going to, sorry if I sound like a broken record, but just sort of reiterate what Councilor Keane and I spoke to you about the other day about this decision. So, to repeat again, just the options that we have, it's going to grant the permit without mitigation, grant the permit with mitigation, and file a notice of appeal. And the concerns that Councilor Keane and I spoke to about the other day were that Mr. Fang and his lawyers are willing to work with the city, and work with us, and provide mitigation to the city, so that when the permit is granted and the supermarket comes, that traffic is going to take care of, pedestrians are going to take care of. And, that being said, you had said that they are willing to work with us, but you want to file the notes of appeal in case something unforeseen comes down the line, that for whatever reason, we have to use that to protect ourselves when we move forward. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The issue being that the notice of appeal is on a shorter timeframe, and once that expires, it's an option you don't have. So, by filing it, you're simply preserving an option. You're not looking to exercise the option, you're just preserving your right, that's it.
Right. And, and the other point I just wanted to bring up is that you had said, and I repeat again, I apologize if I sound like a broken record, that Mr. Fang and his attorneys are going to work with us on mitigation. That being said, if we're going to file a notice of appeal, and he understands that that's not us being abrasive, and that's not us trying to combat it with him, without his attorneys or representation at all being here to say that, I mean, would it, what do you recommend in that we hold off on this, so somebody from his side could stand here and represent him and say, I understand you're just trying to protect your rights, I understand you're not trying to be combative, so we're going to continue and want to work with you? Do you understand what I'm saying here?
You're saying from Mr. Fang's side?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, I asked, I asked, and they weren't willing to do that for various reasons. I mean, the attorney said, if I can get permission for my client, but I'm not too wild about that idea. I mean, they do understand, but there's a constituency that has to be considered here, and that's the folks who are concerned that they're going to be sitting at the corner of, you know, Buckingham and Hancock Street, waiting to come out onto Hancock because of traffic problems. We're just trying to, you know, the lawyers for C-Mart are protecting C-Mart's interests only, and, but, you know, the body has a larger concern, and that's what I'm just trying to make sure we address, is that we do have to make sure the proper mitigation is instituted, if the market is developed. And I think that can be done. I did ask, I told you on Friday, that I wanted to have them here, and it would make my job easier, but because Mr. Ryan was away, Mr. Murray could not come. And he just didn't think it would be wise, in the same manner that I didn't want to make a written recommendation about whether the appeal, he did not want to write a letter to the body about what he said. But I'm saying here, as a matter of, you know, public record, that, and, you know, can be challenged on it, that he understands, and that's all he really asked of him, he understands what we're doing and why, and he's done the same thing in filing his motion to us, which could be considered some sort of salvo in some respects, and is not. So, it's actually quite a frequent occurrence that people do things like this. And I'm working, I'm doing it solely for the deadline.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just want to make sure that we're all understanding that both sides are willing to work towards...
Yes.
Finding something agreeable and...
Not just willing, but motivated to do so, and willing to do so.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else having not been heard? Anyone? Anyone? All right. Thank you, Mr. Timmons. It's just, as the counselor who's ward this project sets in, I just want to say a couple of things very briefly, and then make a motion, there is not one for it this time. But, again, it's, in good faith, that we talked about this project way back when, and talked about mediation, and discussed things around the permit granting authority meetings. And so, I feel badly that people have assigned malice or malicious intent on, in the decision, but that was certainly not the intent of this body. I do think, again, as some people represent a ward, but it's also looking out for the city, that it's important for us to reserve our rights under the law, and again, you know, to recognize that there are two tracks going on, there is a litigation, there are conversations, there are discussions, to try to resolve this and to get to a good place for both the neighborhood and, of course, the proponent. I'm sorry that the proponent, that this was, you know, remanded back, and the judge feels as though we made the wrong decision, however, we still have the city to look after. We still have, I still have Ward 5, folks who live in the immediate area, to look after and ensure that the mitigation that is actually reasonable. And, um, one of the things that, again, it's important as an attorney, although I try not to say too often, I'm an attorney, but, because people don't like them, right, Councilor Calmucci?
They don't like me, yeah.
They don't. So, you know, but, but to recognize that this is just simply a reserving of our rights and is good legal practice, and is not really, this is an adversarial process, the law and lawsuits, and they have gone ahead and filed for these expenses, which is also an acknowledgement that this is an adversarial process, that they're reserving their rights, therefore we should do, do the same, our due diligence in this name, on that track of the lawsuit. So, but again, I appreciate the discussion about mitigation, in good faith, I am happy to hear that Mr. Fang and the mayor are working along those lines, and certainly feel that there is an opportunity, and it's your reason saying that you don't believe that filing, that actually going for an appeal in this case is something that you're even consulting us to do, or that you want to do, or that anybody's really discussing, this is simply reserving our rights. And I think that that's important as representatives of the citizens, not only of the city, but of Ward 5, particularly myself, that I am very much in favor of. And again, it's just a balanced offender's approach to litigation, which, again, is an adversarial process, so...
Yeah, there are issues with some of the facts in the decision, some of the findings that bother me, that I just don't think are right. And I'm concerned about letting them just stand. But the fact of the matter is, I believe if we resolve things, there's a mitigation workout, I'm certain that Mr. Fang and his representatives will come forward and address in a public manner what has gone on and what not, and hopefully clarify the record a little bit. But I'm just concerned about what this decision says standing without further clarification, but I think. And I wouldn't like to say for the record that you are a smarter lawyer than Councilor Calmucci and I, because you're out of practice.
Oh, jumping in a little these days, but, very well. All right, so right now, as the board councillor, although it's a little out of the box as the president, I will make a motion to support filing the notice of appeal in this particular case. Is there a second?
Sure.
All right, there's a motion, it's been seconded. Any further discussion on motion? All right, seen done, Mr. Clark, we call the board.
Councilor Cage?
Yes.
Councilor Crowe?
Yes.
Councilor Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilor Farn?
Yes.
Councilor Yang?
Yes.
Councilor Calmucci?
No.
Councilor Hughes?
Yes.
Thanks, thank you a lot, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. At this time, if there's nothing further, I will adjourn the SPGA, or, yeah, yes.
Motion to adjourn?
What's that?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, motion's made and seconded? No, all those who care, I adjourn. Yay. We are back on the record in our regular council meeting, we left off at the...
I know, Room 1.
There we are.
Madam President.
Yes.
On request of the city solithum, solithum...
Yes, Councilor Calmucci.
If I could, with all due respect to Mr. Clark, Madam President, I see that superintendent's still in the audit direction, okay? This matter is out of order, yeah?
Good, good point, Councilor Calmucci.
Four, five, six, and seven.
Very well, very well.
Take them out of order.
Is there any questions? All right, seen done, so you will do that. Okay. Fourth, Mr. Clark.
Fourth item on the agenda. Atherton Howe Elementary School Feasibility Fund. Have convened an open meeting on Monday, February 1st, 2016, prior to the closing date. Please, City Council, Board members, chapter bylaws and arguments, as voted to authorize the superintendent's school, so submit to the mayor's school building authority a statement of interest.
Oh, yeah, wait, wait.
These are forms, we've got more of them, these are relative to feasibility, that is going to be done at various schools. First one is Atherton Howe.
Thank you. There was a quarter, Mr. Walker, do which, for a moment? Okay, thank you. Or, thank you.
Free, Madam President, thank you very much. These requests, before the body tonight, give the process on the set of projects within the NSBA Accelerated School Repair Program. Finance committee talked a little bit about those earlier this evening, two projects that have gone two steps further down, or one step further down the road from these, where the funding request was necessary. These requests tonight are at the point where we just need to give the authorization to the superintendent to file a notice of intent. It basically sets the stage for us to move forward. It doesn't guarantee funding, it doesn't guarantee placement in the program, it doesn't put any onus on this body or the city to end up moving forward. What it does do is keep us in line, as we have been the last several years, within this program of getting, what's been between 68 and 71 percent state funding. And it's sort of, is a big spoke in the wheel of what's been going on in the city overall in our school buildings. And the mayor asked me to thank just a few people who've been involved, especially this body, over the course of the last seven years, from Central Middle School to Sterling Middle School, to the H-Rax system at the Burnaz Army, to the windows and doors of class schools we were able to do over this past summer, project after project, the consolidation of the public buildings department, here's the one centralized location, which has helped us get work order after work order done in the school buildings that had not been done before, we're heading in such a right direction now, because this body, the school committee, our state legislators, superintendent, his leadership team, the mayor's office, everyone's rolling in the same direction, and these schools are much better off for it. This is, these are fairly basic orders, again, they don't require anything further from this body. There is a deadline to them, superintendent does need to file these by the middle of this month to keep us in line for the next round of funding. So, we would appreciate if the body could vote on these, and they do need, require four separate votes, we can't do them all at once. With that, I'll turn it over back to you, Secretary. Of course, the superintendent this year, if there are any questions, as well as the building leadership team, Mr. Carter, Mr. McDonald there as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. Councilor, the fours.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess for you to, Mr. McDonald, or whoever would be on the project for the Atherton Howe. About Honeywell, this council, our boiler problems, huh? Oh, that's behind us. Okay. On this, of course, it's something, you know, of Atherton Howe School celebrated a 100 day anniversary a few years ago. What on the other, did we do any NSA funding for Atherton Howe previously? Do we do the, I felt those little windows and doors project there as well?
I'm not aware of any, it's funding at Atherton Howe.
Okay. So, this is eligibility and priority is going to be for, so for example, Marymount actually do windows and doors, this year do roofing, prior to Atherton Howe, since they've got boiler replaced, then do we have anything else in the pipeline for Atherton Howe?
Well, we, we've tried to get all the windows done that we can in the city, but the windows have to be 20 years old or more. We don't have any more schools with windows in that condition. I think Atlantic may be the next school that we'd like to address, but because there weren't any more window projects, we looked at, part of this program for the accelerated repair is boilers. So, we looked at, a close look at our schools with we need the most, and these four appear to be at the top of our list. So, I mean, Atherton Howe, Wallaston, and Marymount, they're actually, there's two boilers in all three of those schools. Each one of those schools had the boilers installed in 2007.
For the Honeywell project?
Right. And the remaining boilers are original to the school, they've never been replaced, so they're very old.
At Atherton Howe?
Yes.
We've got a nice and elegant boiler functioning today at Atherton Howe.
That's what I'm being told, yes.
You mentioned that.
And, the thing is, you really don't want to replace all the boilers at the same time, you know, two at a time, because they're both failing at the same time. So, this actually works out well for us, if we could get these, because as I said, it'd be a 10-year difference in that. So, that would work well. And, you know, it's not just the boiler that we're looking at, you've got the cost of the engineering, you've got asbestos removal, you've got demolition of the old boiler, remove the old piping, pumps, electrical condensate tanks, and then replace the same. You're probably going to have to put concrete pads in there, and add in Burnaz Army, you're going to probably have all the flue piping. So, it's, a boiler may cost 70,000, but it's much greater than that.
So, you had alluded to that earlier in our, you may have been by this meeting, so $250,000 probably for a part of the NSA.
Yes.
What would be the eligibility rate, reimbursement rate?
Based on past experience, it's like, you know, between 68% to 70%, something in that range.
Until we file a, you know, whatever.
We really don't know, and they'll let us know.
And would it, our project budget, extended project budget at this time?
Well, we're guessing they're all in that range of 250,000 each.
250, they're meeting the thresholds, and they're writing...
We, you know, it's hard for us to actually tell, it could be more, you know? But we're fairly confident with all the work, and based on the, you know, pricing we get, what engineering costs are, asbestos removal, we're pretty, we're confident that we'll exceed the 250, to be in that range. It's, we don't have a crystal ball, but we think we're pretty confident.
But it is something to see if they have enough money, dollars, that we can get to leverage for the taxpayers that pay. So, I understand typically, looking for some finance gap, but, the other thing I guess was, I think Tom Ferraro took me on a tour of a lot of the school boilers back in the Honeywell saga days, and Broad Menos has every style heating type that there is.
Broad Menos has these modular boilers that really...
Modular, they've seen, they've entered, and made everything.
Right, exactly. So, we're actually replacing those, and I think there's like six or something like that, and we'll be replacing them for free. They'll be high, high efficiency boilers. And that, that, this goes forward would be terrific, because, you know, we'll have the new windows and roof as well.
Where is that?
Beachway.
Oh, Beachway, I'm sorry, I referenced Broad Menos, sorry. Okay, so they're just here on Atherton Howe, and roof, what are the roof commissions there?
On...
Atherton Howe?
Atherton Howe? Well, we looked at the roofs, we did a survey of our roofs, and the roofs are in fairly good... good condition. We don't, we really, it's, I'm not exactly sure, or in Atherton, I can get back to on that, but we surveyed them, and we didn't have any, you know, we did a roof repair of four or five years ago, a major roof repair in the city. But we don't have the square footage to really get funding from MSBA, we don't have enough square footage.
Because that project would have to itself scandal under the 250.
Yes.
All right, I just was thinking, we're finally saying, you know, the notice of intent. Priority for us today is boiler, hypothetically, if not in Atherton Howe situation, or maybe some of these other schools, we would then have the opportunity to come back for the funding, for the windows, for the doors, for, for other eligible projects, eligible.
Each year we get a statement of, well, we have, the superintendent's got statements of interest from MSBA, and then we talk about it, we look at what the body needs are, and we go through, get together as a team and look at the, our schools, and talk to, you know, our plumbers, and all the guys who are working day to day, who are really familiar with the issues that we have at these schools, the custodians, Kevin Sagala, superintendent, they, they, you know, we get a lot of his feedback, we look at work slips that we have at schools, so we track those, and we find out where, where it needs out.
Yeah, you can't quantify the, the lot of heart those custodians, they've been so there.
Absolutely.
We only have tremendous support there and daily operation of the rest of the schools. So I guess just the timeline for this, particularly in Atherton Howe, too deep on the identity of Marymount, by us putting this in, if it's voted tonight, what's the timeline, the potential of the CA coming in for funding, coming in for design, coming in for.
Right, the foresee, you know, go, what'll happen, you know, we'll send in a statement if this is approved, we'll go with a statement of interest. Then, um, MSBA will contact us, they'll meet with us, we'll go to each individual school, we'll show them the deficiencies that we have, um, and then they'll either approve it or deny it. Then we will, um, if it's approved, hopefully we can go, move forward with the project. They will, um, assign us an engineer, and probably an owner's project manager on these, and, um, we'll put a schematic design together on that, and then we'll put prices together on that, um, we'll submit it, hopefully for approval, and then we'll come to this board, hopefully to move forward. So it's about a year process, we'll probably be back in the next year at the same time on these.
So you're, you're looking at process two, um, before you're getting funding, construction is a year, so it's going to be a year permitting, it goes about permitting.
The whole process, it takes, takes time, yes, but, God willing, we'll be here next year doing this.
Well, that's it, you've been very, you know, superintendent, you've been very successful with getting councilmen, and, you know, doing quality projects, I'm sure they'll find, they'll find a way, but thank you so much. Okay, thank you, Counselor LeForest. Counselor Crowell? Move passage, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All right, so this is, uh, motion has, motion is made and seconded. Mr. Clark will be called over.
Counselor Kane, yes. Counselor Crowell, yes. Counselor DeBon, yes. Counselor LaFarr, yes. Counselor Yang, yes. Counselor Calm. President Hughes, yes. Six councils. Mitch Potter is very similar, but it's for the Beachwood No.1 Elementary School, this feasibility funding. I'm going to read the passage.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Uh, is there discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clark will be called over.
Counselor Kane, yes. Counselor Crowell, yes. Counselor DeBon, yes. Counselor LaFarr, yes. Counselor Yang, yes. Counselor Calm.
Yes.
President Hughes, yes. Seven members of the passage. The third one is the same him, but it's the Marymount Elementary School, please move the passage.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor LeForest. Mr. Clark will be called over.
Counselor Kane, yes. Counselor Crowell, yes. Counselor DeBon, yes. Counselor LaFarr, yes. Counselor Yang, yes. Counselor Calm.
Yes.
President Hughes, yes.
Next item.
Last one, the same, Wallaceford School. Wait for reading the passage.
Um, seconded by Counselor, Counselor Kane, do you want to?
Yep, just real quick, just want to acknowledge the work that's already been done at Wallaceford School. To date, the windows, we appreciate the documentation process that paid for there, as well as Montclair School. I don't want to go on and repeat the questions that Counselor LeForest has put forward. I understand most recently, though, and just one question, I know that there was some damage that was taking place in the gymnasium, the walls, which I'm not sure if that had been fully taken care of, or if that would be part of this application process for the work.
Gary, did you want to, or Walter?
The water damage that we had down the, we believe was caused by, the sole panels being put in, and, um, so what we did, the, um, we did a test on the ceiling, we had the plaster had my new, um, asbestos closed the gym wall, and we mediated that. Right now, we're in the process, we had, um, Soul City Representatives come in, we had their roof, we'll come in with that, we're making arrangements now to repair that roof, and once that's repaired, we'll fix the ceiling, paint that, and also.
And is that a repair covered by some sort of guarantee?
No, that repair should be covered by Soul City.
Right.
If they cause that, then we're going to, we'll go out and get that announced, that. You know, any disillusions would come under, um, public buildings, uh, funds.
So we're paying for that front end, if we bring it possible, Soul City, or Soul City.
Soul City will pay for repairs, and pay for that, because that's our plan.
Okay, and there's, uh, any further global issues in that area, is it gymnasium, or global issues in the area of gymnasium, or otherwise?
Not that I'm aware of, yes, not that I'm aware of, you know, it's unfortunately that we have the roof, where you have a, right, and it's just showed up now, unfortunately.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Calm. Thank you, Counselor Kane, anyone else? Very well, Mr. Clark will be called over.
Wallaceford School, Counselor Kane, yes. Counselor Crowell, yes. Counselor DeBon, yes. Counselor LaFarr, yes. Counselor Yang, yes. Counselor Calm.
Yes.
President Hughes, yes.
Thank you, back to item number one, Mr. Clark.
Item number one. On the request of the city solicitor, with approval as on the may, a sum of $170,000 hereby appropriate to city solicitors office outside council, payment of legal fees associated with the defense of city officials and the zoning field, case tried in Mount Park County. Wait for the reading, and now I'd like to refer that to finance. Judge, please.
Pardon my ask. Thank you. Next item.
On the, on the motion to refer it to finance?
Yes, Counselor Calm.
Through you to Mr. Timmons, is there a, or, to the mayor's representative?
Mr. Walker has none.
Is there a, Jim, is there, is there a?
Mr. Timmons, could you come forward? Thank you, wanting to weigh Counselor Calm into Mr. Timmons' house, to my income.
Is there a corresponding appropriation for the judgment? I mean, this is the case, I think I saw in the appeal legend, there was a judgment?
Right. No, there is not.
Okay, uh, divulging legal secrets, is there?
Well.
Why wouldn't we both commit together, the appropriation for the money we spent on attorneys, as well as the, I mean, see if you can wrap the case up, you pay for it all?
Well, the, uh, there was a jury verdict, but there's still some post-trial activity on the jury verdict, a JNOB motion.
Point, point of order. Yes, state, uh, state of point, Counselor LeForest. These two cases reference, the Woodruff case and Count in the Skything, I just want to be sure which, which, Counselor, which line of questioning about the possibility is on?
No, those are two different lawyers who were involved in the thing case.
Right, no, there's two cases referenced here, so the one, you're talking, on your question, you're answering relative to the thing case.
What's the second case?
In your memorandum to us dated today, you referenced, the request is necessary, in fact, the shares outside council account is now exhausted as a result of two cases. Okay, but this specifically is only the thing case, okay? Sorry.
It's two different law firms on the same case. Sorry.
Okay.
There were 13 defendants in this case, that was part of the problem, but in any event, the jury verdict applies to a cluster of five defendants. We're seeking through a JNOB motion to have that, that verdict stricken, and judgment to enter for the defendants. So we're going to wait until that occurs, and then this is another one where there's appeal issues that we're going to have to look at. But for now, at least, um, we're going to, I want to get this done, because these lawyers are done with their part in the case, they're, they're out.
So two questions, one, um, so we're not voting on funding the judgment that the judge awarded, or that the jury awarded, or if it's a judge.
It's a jury verdict, there's no final judgment, yeah.
Because one, you're going to try and shave some off of that with limiting exposure for certain defendants, and then two, you may appeal that.
Correct, or eliminate it altogether.
Okay, and then, um, the second question is, the attorneys that we're paying $170,000 to, they're not involved in the JNOB motion or potential appeal?
Correct, they are not. And so happened that each of them, each of them represented a party who's out of the case now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Perhaps through you to the finance chair, Mr. Timmons, why is this going to committee? Has it not been advertised?
Never got any backup.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right. Counselor Crowell, keep, seconded.
We were just awaiting backup, and when I had my conversation with the mayor's representative late on Friday, I mean, I, speaking for the body in that capacity, didn't feel comfortable without seeing some sort of alway, it's, I mean, I know we've been in a discussion, but it sounds like we can move through this conversation fairly well.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Chairman of the finance committee, making sure we get the backup necessary to take these ones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Calm. Counselor LeForest. I also want to thank Counselor Crowell for the request for backup, that is something that I want to share with the CA. This is a case in Wardline, uh, built somewhat relative to a residential construction project. Mr. Timmons, I guess my question, not on the finance side, but on the case side, the mayors had to endure difficult conditions as a result of this litigation. Mr. Finn's lack of care of his property, the life of the project, the property has become, the deterioration of the public street, the fact that the public municipality is out to install jury barriers for member of public safety, or, you know, I could go on a bit about concerns on this project, is that something that the court has taken to consideration in the expenses and the, um, and the detriment it's been to the neighborhood?
Um, not, not all of it, there was testimony about the Jersey barriers, and the fact that the site was essentially abandoned, and that DPW had to install barriers. Now, his pitch was different, that he obtained the permits timely, then he would have been able to, um, develop a lot in a manner that none of that would have happened, so.
But his responsibility for the site, so for example, he had had construction cuts and we kept blowing over and causing damage and causing compensating hazard, he's responsible, that would have been his responsibility, given this municipality had to step into it. I guess if we're going to hear more about this in committee, and I guess I'll make my way to catch up with you offline, on where this stands, I do want to have, I need a better understanding of the process of, along, although there were some butters and laws in the case, there's other butters who are looking for information, and what next? So, if you and I should best take that conversation offline, submit a letter to the neighborhood.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor LeForest. All right, thank you, Mr. Solicitor. To finance, yes, thank you, Mr. Clark, next item?
Number two, Madam President, on the request of the city clerk, if it was on the may, a sum of $65,000 hereby.
Waiving.
Waiving. Election cost.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, uh, I do not see R.I.P., yes, recognize Counselor Kane, move to finance committee.
Second.
All right, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, yes, have it.
Next item is number 10. This is from Counselor Finn, this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance in section 5.8.3, specific signs. He wants to delete section 5.3.8, section 12 in entirety, and substitute a new section 12 about political signs. This is, uh, was discussed extensively in 2009 and 10, when they do the new zoning ordinance, and the consultant that we used at that time had a different opinion than some of the committee members, but it was, it was, the sign on some change for service. Counselor Finn would like to take a look at, it does have required one, it's not a question. Yes, and, and.
All right, thank you. Counselor Forest, thanks, Madam President, I do spend, we spent a lot of time during the recalcification of the zoning ordinances, and I remember when it came time to, you know, a few things, like signage is one, I knew it was going to be a hot topic, parking was another, that at that time, we should hold everything up, that we need to kind of carve this out, so it's great for getting back to the, to the signage, and we can get back to the parking, and some of the other, and Professor is, somebody's love saying, but.
Robowski.
Robowski, he is, he is the expert on experts on, on a lot of the zoning, um, so I look forward to this discussion, seeing if there's improvements we need to make. Thank you, Counselor Forest, Professor Robowski is my proud graduate professor. Is he? Yeah, he was as kind to me as he was to the city. So move to ordinance? Yes, I'll, I'll schedule, we'll check, let's just schedule a minute. Okay.
Number.
Second.
Number eight on the agenda.
To go to the chair. Oh, wow, who's that? Excuse me, Mr. Clark. Continue, Mr. Clark.
Number eight. We're the name of city queens accept a gift upon a condition attached in here in set four, Berry stones, $3,500, these are Berry stones from Mayor's Lot.
Counselor.
Move passage and send a letter of thanks, please.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor DeBon, all those in favor?
It's a roll call.
A roll call.
Counselor Kane, yes. Counselor Crowell, yes. Counselor DeBon, yes. Counselor LaFarr, yes. Counselor Yang, yes. Counselor Calm.
President.
President Hughes.
Yes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Next item, also a gift.
Counselor.
We're the name of city queens, accept the following gifts, by condition attached.
Mr. Clark, move passage.
15, yes.
Seconded, seconded by Counselor Kane, Mr. Clark will be called over.
Counselor Kane, yes. Counselor Crowell, yes. Counselor DeBon, yes. Counselor LaFarr, yes. Counselor Yang, yes. Counselor Calm.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members of the committee's set.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next item.
Next item is a resolve from Counselor Calm, requesting that planning, and under the urban planning assessment, guidance future development self-qualifying.
Wait for the reading.
Okay.
To, to a committee.
Counselor Calm, did you want to be here?
I'd ask that it be referred to the economic development, may.
There you go, refers to economic development, uh, well, downtown, and economic development.
Mr. Clark, what committee would you suggest this be referred to?
That would be wonderful, and I would, um.
I'll take it.
Actually, perhaps to Public Works.
Sure.
Public Works, joint referral.
Sure, thank you.
Great.
Madam President.
Thank you. Public Works, joint referral to Public Works, and downtown and economic work.
Number 11.
Next item.
Resolve from Counselor Calm, whereas this public is mandated to serve protect the public safety of the city.
Wait for the reading.
Counselor Calm.
Did you wish to rehear Counselor Calm?
Uh, yes, very briefly. I, I actually, I'm hoping that, um, we can vote on this tonight rather than refer it to committee. I think, uh, everyone has signed on to this, I believe counsel Finn has indicated his, desire to also, of course, want to assess, simply to invite the chief up to the council to, um, go over and have a discussion with us on oversight management of the detail operation program, uh, the detail operations at the, at the Quincy Police Department. I think it's, it's been some coverage in the, the media, and there's some, some issues going on there, at least one issue going on there. Uh, I just wanted to present, uh, this to the council, so that we can invite the chief to come up and have a conversation with us, uh, at a public hearing as to ways in which he is working towards improving oversight of that detailed program. And, uh, I think it would, uh, send a good message if this body were to support this resolution, invite him up at a, a date that, that's convenient for him at a future hearing.
Thank you, counsel Calhoun. Further discussion, is there a second? Okay. Is there further discussion? Seconded by counsel Kane, further discussion on that? All right, seeing none, Mr. Clark, are you taking the roll?
Counsel Kane, yes. Counsel Paul, yes. Counsel Devon, yes. Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeang.
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next item?
Next item is number twelve on the agenda. Be it a name of the city council, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Please agree.
A resolution seeking update-
Please agree.
On administration enforcement of the city Quincy neighborhood property preservation of light items and the status of advanced property services.
Great. Counsel, counsel, counsel of force.
Thank you, Madam President. This is, um, a resolution that I, you can say, partnered with counsel Paul, and each of my terms in office, and yourself as co-sponsor, and actually counsel Calhoun, who was one of our previous sign-ons, and add it to this resolution. Blood has been a difficult, chronic blood, a particular difficult problem that I award, and, um, I have quite a spreadsheet of properties, that these are properties that are just a little bit overgrown, a little bit missing paint. These are very long-term chronic lives, that I have regular discussions with J. D. Verbaugh, and, um, how we can move forward from just these every time a complaint comes in, he goes to take it, to get compliance. So, I know, um, you had sent us some information, and it may have been from some of the communities. I've spoken with Commissioner Duba, and at this point, I just want to refer this to committee, and, um, schedule a time. This may be something we wanna discuss in the council, even if we have this opposing committee, and I'll leave that up to you, Madam President, for forward. So, just tonight, committing in, um, to schedule our time for discussion, we have the updates from Director Duba.
All right. Did you wanna refer to oversight, or?
Sure.
Okay. So, for counsel, I think we have none in the environment, or in the product. Okay. Just briefly, I, I, I thank you, uh, counsel of force, for, uh, bringing this back and, and reaching out, and there were a couple of instances that I had a couple of conversations with J. D., who was here, um, the Director of Inspection, who was here earlier, uh, I just wanted to recognize that. I believe he, he did have to leave for, um, another, uh, engagement, but, uh, he was here earlier, and, uh, again, I appreciate you doing this, this is, uh, some of the support that affects our city, but, um, and there are some innovative things that different communities are doing. Uh, I did have to read something about, uh, a few communities, Wayne Thirven and some others, through, um, the Harvard, uh, extension program, working with some grad students. But there are some things we can do to be proactive regarding, uh, lighted properties, and really defining what the term of our light really means, um, is important for the discussion when we brings back, uh, so, if it will be referred to, uh, oversight and environments or public health, the joint referral, thank you. Yes, counsel Calhoun.
Could I? Are we voting on this? Can we vote on that referral?
We were not, it's gonna do it anyway.
I just wanted to, uh, back on order two sixteen dash zero four six of the QPD deal, uh, I would just ask that this, a copy of this be sent to the chief, as well as, uh, the resolution be referred to the Oversight Committee for that future hearing, otherwise we'll have no mechanism by which it could happen here.
All right, make sure that the clerk-
Thank you.
Does that, and that's reflected in minutes. Thank you. All right, and- No further business on the regular agenda, no, uh, approval of meeting minutes at this time. Uh, communication and reports from the mayor, other city officials.
I have some communications, uh, for the first one. From counsel Forrest, Ward one, this is traffic, add a handicap parking space at one ten, there at Anthony Road.
Ordinance sanitized.
Second one from counsel Calhoun, add a, do not enter, four P. M. dash six P. M. at Rogers Street, intersecting with Willow Street.
Ordinance sanitized.
All the communications I have.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Uh, unfinished business, or, yes, counsel Calhoun?
Uh, yes, if I could inquire, there was a, um, a matter which we referred to as a community, a communication at the last meeting, relative to Boston Scientific's permit for FedEx facility. Um, the mayor's representative indicated that he's gonna get back to us, to the effect that we have, if any, on the TIP agreement that the city had, and asked that you be able to respond to that, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Walker?
Three, Madam President. Uh, that issue is under review by the solicitor's office, and some of our economic development folks, and a move, further determination has been made. Uh, at this point, we will get back to you, uh, as soon as, um, we can, we have, truly need to be informed.
And is, is the matter being held with the planning environment until that determination's made, or is?
I mean, at the point- My sense is that, that you'll have an answer well before the planning, uh, makes any, any decision.
Thank you.
Uh, counsel of force.
I believe, um, counsel Finn, supposed to probably be the day, the day, February seventeenth? Time, location? No, no.
Okay.
Anyone, any of yours? Counsel Finn, I believe it was actually in tonight's ledger, right?
It's on the website.
And it's on city website, yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything for other counsel Calhoun?
Nobody.
Uh, reports of, uh, no, actually, uh, unfinished business and from the preceding meeting? Anything? Same? Any? None? All right. Uh, reports committees, counsel of force.
Okay, Chair of the Ordinance Committee, I'll get to, get the phone, please. Okay, traffic requests coming through tonight, from Ward two, counsel Paul, um, counsel number twenty sixteen dash zero two, zero twenty seven, add handicap parking at fifty-six firms, add, I don't know. Uh, fifty-six firms, add handicap parking, Ward two.
All right, motion, motions been made to approve, seconded by counsel Devon, uh, on the motion, Mr. Clark.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Paul, yes. Counsel Devon, yes. Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeang, counsel Calhoun.
Yes.
Yes.
Next up, counsel order twenty sixteen dash zero twenty-eight, issued by counsel Kane, add handicap parking at ninety-one Farron Street, I don't know.
Uh, motion to approve, seconded by counsel Kane. Mr. Clark, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel Kane, yes. Counsel Paul, yes. Counsel Devon, yes. Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeang.
Yeah.
Counsel Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Next up, also by counsel Kane, counsel order twenty sixteen dash zero two nine, to remove handicap parking at one twenty seventh Street, I move, uh, positive recommendation.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by counsel Kane. Mr. Clark, on the motion, call the roll.
Counsel Kane, yes. Counsel Paul, counsel Devon, yes. Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeang.
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Okay, we have counsel twenty sixteen dash zero three zero by Ward four, counsel Calhoun, to install no parking, tow zone in Hayden Street, West Side, from Lauren Street to Willow Street, and positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, seconded by, uh, counsel Leeang. Uh, Mr. Clark, on the motion?
Counsel Kane, yes. Counsel Paul, yes. Counsel Devon, yes. Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeang.
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun, yes. President Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor twenty sixteen dash zero three one by counsel Calhoun, add no parking, tow zone, December, January, February, and March, on the east side of Hayden Street, Lauren Street, to Mona Street, and a positive recommendation.
Okay, positive recommendation, seconded by counsel Calhoun. Uh, Mr. Clark, on the roll, uh, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane, yes. Counsel Paul, yes. Counsel Devon, yes. Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeang.
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, counsel order twenty sixteen dash zero three two, Ward four, by counsel Calhoun, to remove no parking at sixty-five Hughes Street, and a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, seconded by counsel Calhoun. Mr. Clark, call the roll.
Counsel Kane, yes. Counsel Paul, yes. Counsel Forrest. Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeang.
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, counsel twenty sixteen dash zero three three, Ward five, by counsel Hughes, add handicap parking at one Bedford Street, and a positive recommendation.
Thank you, uh, positive recommendation, seconded by counsel Leeang. Mr. Clark, on the motion?
Counsel Kane, counsel Paul, counsel Devon, yes. Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeang.
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor twenty sixteen dash zero three four, and Ward five, by counsel Hughes, to install handicap parking at seventy Olds Colony Avenue, positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, seconded by counsel Leeang.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Paul, yes. Counsel Devon, yes. Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeang.
Yes.
Counsel Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
And, uh, last is, uh, our Works Committee, earlier this evening, we held a public hearing, um, for national credit gas, to install, maintain approximately eleven point five feet, more or less twelve inch, gas main in Forest Street, from existing twelve inch gas main to build to fifty-eight, easterly to propose eight inch gas main at Longway.
On the motion?
Bill, do you not?
Oh, okay.
Just letting you know, the public hearing was, was held this evening, as they reported the committee, um, that that matter was being held this evening.
Okay. Sorry. Is there a motion?
So, no, standing committee, so just, there's no motion, there's no order, it's just a report of the Works Committee, that the hearing was held. The matter's, the matter's standing committee. The board committee.
Okay. All right, so, done. You're not asking. Okay. So-
Mr. Man.
Counsel, counsel Calhoun, did you wanna be there?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No, okay. All right, see, it goes, it remains in committee.
That's right.
Is it? Okay. All right. Very well. Anything further, counsel of force?
Nope, no.
Thank you. All right, uh, presentation petitions, memorials, and remonstrance.
Yes, counsel of force, thank you, I do have a memorial this evening, uh, except for the passing of Paul Briggs, of Quincy Fire Original, you made, uh, most of us probably know, his son, Steph and Steve, um, Paul Briggs, eight, six, and hang, passed peace, he's passed away peacefully, after complications from up for long, they're illness. He's a Korean War veteran. He was the, uh, began his career as a cultural fighter in nineteen fifty-four, elected president in seventy-five, and subsequently chairman of board and chairman of board of errors. He's very active, philanthropic member of our community, and I just wanted to, uh, send our thoughts and care and prayers to Doug, his wife Claudia, Steve and Nancy, uh, Steve Norrell, sorry, Nancy, the daughter Nancy, and husband Bill, um, and their extended family, they've been, uh, frequently part of us, and my sympathies for their loss.
Thank you, counsel of force. Anyone else? Yes, counsel Paul.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if it really fits in the side of the box, I mean, one of those three, but it's certainly a milestone, and you see the commissioner sitting in the back of the room, but, uh, he just had a gentleman by the name of Roy Cattinelli retire, who had forty-two years of service, worker for the city. And if you know Roy, he's a very humble guy, I offered him an invitation to come up, but, um, you know, he respectfully declined, and he comes from a litany of, uh, municipal workers, staff, but Cattinelli's been a police officer forever, and, um, I'm sure, Commissioner Ramon, he's gonna miss his, uh, his service in the department, but, uh, just a super guy, and that's quite a milestone, forty-two years of service, so, just to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Anything further? All right, we'll move forward with motions, orders, and resolutions. Okay? Motions, orders, resolutions, no. Seeing none, moving, scheduling committee meetings and public hearings. Anything? Maybe, scheduling committee meetings, public hearings? Chair. Okay, seeing none, um, all right.